The flag of the state of New Mexico is the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and begin with a roll call, please.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long. Michael Schoff.
Here.
Priscilla Benali.
Uh, hold on, I think we're gonna have Priscilla on the phone. We'll get her real quick. Let's keep going.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Okay, all right, we'll call her in a little bit. Uh, just for everybody's information, Priscilla will be available on the phone. She's going to, she's just getting off a plane and so for roll call purposes, it's not really going through. But we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and continue. Let's, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda, please.
So moved.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Schoff?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, we're off and running. Uh, next item is the approval of a consent agenda, items three, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Uh, number one, are there any questions about any of these items? Everybody's good? Okay, then if you have a motion, let's hear it.
Motion to approve consent agenda items three A, three B, three C, three D, three E, three F, and three G.
All right, in a second?
Second.
I have a feeling it's gonna go like that all day. All right, and roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Schoff?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Okay, well, let's jump to, let's jump to new business, um, item six, and for that, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt, please.
President Mortensen, members of the board, um, as you know, every so often, we need to do a facility master plan for the school district, uh, and it's a five-year facility master plan. Uh, and we have to bring that to the board for approval. It's a part of the process for when we go before the PSCOC and request funding, and it's part of that whole bureaucratic excitement that we have to deal with, with the state of New Mexico. Um, so I do have, uh, we do have some guests here, but to lead this discussion, uh, we have Javana Hanks, deputy superintendent, and Kathy, Kathy Chrysler, uh, who's the director of procurement. I'll introduce our guests and then be leading the presentation. Ms. Hanks?
President Mortensen, members of the board, superintendent, members of the audience. I do have with me Catherine Chrysler. Um, I do want to say that she has been exceptionally instrumental in getting these projects and continuing to keep them moving forward. Um, and she may be able to answer questions that I will not, um, or vice versa. Um, we also have the team on with us today, John Chisholm and Molly Smith, who will be leading the presentation from the A and E.
Capital A.
Capital A and E. Um, and I would just like to say that the presentation is in a specific format because this is required by the Public School Capital Outlay and the Public School Capital Outlay Council. I can't say that we necessarily agree, um, with what they require us to do, um, but we believe that we are being fully transparent with the capital need of the district. Um, and we will discuss that a little bit more at the end of the presentation, and at this time, I'll turn it over to the, to the vendors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Molly, are you able to share your screen?
See that?
See that?
Okay.
Perfect.
Perfect, just a quick introduction. I'm not if you wanna go to the next slide. Uh, yeah, this, this project started roughly almost a year ago, they'd say, and, um, so the, as, uh, as mentioned, the facility master planning process, uh, needs to be done every five years according to the state, and so that, um, process is, um, at the, towards the end here. Yeah, on our team, Capital A E, I'm Josh Chisholm, uh, representing Capital A E. Um, we, uh, teamed up with Think Smart Planning and Applied Economics. Um, our portion was, we went and assessed all of your buildings, all of your schools, um, for condition, uh, and then Think Smart Planning facilitated all the planning meetings and ran the cost utilization calculations, and then Applied Economics, um, provided the demographics. And so Molly Smith is on the, the call today and a couple of other of, uh, Capital A E members that were part of the project. Um, but, uh, we're here today, and so Molly's gonna lead the, uh, conversation in the first half, and then I'm gonna bring it home. So thanks for having us today.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, good, good morning, members of the board and superintendent. Um, I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt or ask at the end. Um, I'm going to go through your enrollment trends first, and so, um, Applied Economics, our demographer, we worked all the time, uh, based all of these projections on numbers that were obtained from both the state and the district. Uh, the first slide here, we're gonna talk about, and you may be familiar with this information already, is that we, um, the blue bars here show your historic enrollment. Um, and you can see that in 2020, you had a pretty, uh, good-sized, uh, boost because of, um, COVID. I, I believe you took on a lot of extra students then, and the demographer is seeing that we will have a decline in enrollment, but it will be very gradual. Uh, we're looking at 3.5% over the next five years. If you compare that to the state of New Mexico, uh, we're seeing pretty much a 2% decline in birth rates overall in the state per year. So, um, you're in good position. You're not, you're not declining at that rate, so, um, even though you are declining, it's not, not a huge number. Capacity utilization, this is where we look at, um, basically, we look at all of your facilities and we calculate how many seats you have, how many students you can accommodate, and then we just compare that to your enrollments, and that's literally what utilization is, uh, is a number of seats compared to enrollment. And, uh, we're just gonna show you the all-district capacity here. There are, um, we do have presentation on your, um, Wiki site for this project. You can look at, it shows all of the numbers if you care to delve into that. But here, we're looking at utilizations, basically, in the elementary grades, we're gonna see a slight decline of utilization from 78 to 72%. In middles, we're going to see a decline from 76 to 70%. Uh, middle high, which is, uh, we just have that category for the six through 12 schools. Those schools, we're seeing a 62%, now we're seeing 59% later. Um, but our high schools, we are seeing, um, an increase in utilization, and that is because of the projects that you're currently doing, the projects you're currently replacing schools, you're right sizing, you're getting, uh, the number of seats, uh, more aligned with your number of students, which is a very positive thing. So you're seeing, um, 83% uh, now and 87% in '29. Um, so we're looking at about 22% of your seats open now and 25% projected for 2029. And so basically, here you can see that in the bar charts, your dark blue is number of seats, and the red is the current enrollment, and the yellow is 2029. And so what that means is that in, by 2029, you should have about 4,000 seats open, and so we would recommend that as you replace facilities, um, as you, uh, do repairs or anything like that, you try to right-size, you try to get your facilities sized for your, um, your enrollment, what your projected enrollment is. And the reason that we say this is that we don't, we don't wanna see the district spend money on, um, square footage that is not needed, that money could go into other programs and things like that, and so, um, but I will tell you, in comparison to most of the other districts we deal with, uh, gallops in a pretty good position. You're, you're doing a good job, your team's doing a good job at moving, uh, in this direction. And I'm gonna turn it over to you, Josh, for facilities inventory.
All right, so if we go to the next slide, you'll see an inventory of all of your buildings. Uh, you can see the, there's a, whoop, I lost the car point there, Molly.
Um, it's coming back. Here we go.
There it is. Got it. Yeah, so what you can see here is just, I mean, there's a lot of data going on here, but the main takeaways here are, the first column are all of your schools, um, and then there are two other columns here that have, uh, color in them. And so the condition rank is a, is a very important piece. I'm sure you guys are very here with this, but, uh, depending on what, uh, condition your building's in, you may not be eligible for, uh, state funding for a local or a state match, uh, for capital projects, whether it be rebuilds or, uh, systems-based projects like roofs and HVAC and fire alarm systems. So, uh, the darker, the red shows the darker, uh, the worse the condition of the schools and the lower the rank, um, according to roughly 800 schools across the state of New Mexico, these rankings, um, are, are
Against each other.
Against each other across the state, and so you'll notice that the next column over does say rebuild next to a lot of your red, uh, dark red schools, and so, um, the big takeaway here is that you have, have been and continue to strive towards rebuilding the worst-conditioned schools, and as Molly said, the good, the, the kind of the, the second-best piece of, about that is, I lost it again, my second-best piece about replacing those schools is that the, um, right-sizing these schools, meaning making them, uh, rebuilding them to the size of the student enrollment, um, is also helpful because, um, every dollar counts, um, in the K-12 industry. So the other colorful column is the far-right column, and that is the utilization rates of these schools, um, in 2029. That's a forecasted utilization rate, and that is the same information that Molly just provided in the capacity utilization slides. Next slide.
All right, so as
All right, so as part of any good facilities master plan, we have to understand, uh, the boundaries that we are within to make sure that we have finances to pay for all the things that we want. We always, uh, we always understand that there are generally more ones than, and then there are, uh, finances and, and, um, oftentimes in K-12, there's more need than there are finances, uh, to be able to pay for that. And so this is broken into, uh, two buckets. The top, um, kind of, uh, table there is reoccurring revenue. These are revenues that come into, uh, the district annually and are, are relatively reoccurring. Now, SB nine is the first one you'll see up there. That is a reoccurring revenue, but of course, it requires a passing vote from the voters to maintain that. Um, and so I believe that's a five or, five or six-year, uh, re, uh, reoccurring replacement cycle. We got to go back to the voters, get that approved. So all of the SB nine money was not allocated towards the facilities master plan because some of those funds, and most of those funds are used for operational dollars and maintenance dollars. Um, so we try to be cognitive when looking at how much financing do we truly have to allocate towards bigger capital projects and not forgetting that we use some of these funds for operations and maintenance. So, uh, we have, uh, the SB nine, we sus, we, uh, went back and forth a bit to come up with what we thought was a comfortable number in the impact aid money, which was 10 million and then, uh, a little over 1.5 million in annual revenue in the general fund. So over the next five years, these are five-year facilities master plans, um, that's, uh, that's $63 million in reoccurring revenue, and then, uh, the next column, or the next paragraph down is more like one-time revenue. So there's a little bit of 2024 bond, uh, available still, 94 million. There's, uh, $2 million impact aid available and a no-tax increase GO bond, uh, next year, 2025, at 17 million, um, according to, uh, your financial advisor, is a, is a, uh, safe number, and so you're at 28 million there. So the two together is, uh, just a little over $92 million. Uh, the funding out at the bottom is a one-time fund opportunity. That was Alphabell 505 for safety and security upgrade. So we did not include that in because all of those funds were identified and allocated for some. Over the next five years, this is kind of where we step into facilities master plan under, um, this is what we have and what do we want to accomplish. So 92 million is a, is, is kind of starting number. So, next slide. All right, so after we went through, uh, the steering committee meetings and, um, went back and forth, understanding what projects need to be done, what projects could wait, um, we came into two scenarios. So this is the first scenario that you'll see, and scenario one requires a funding waiver from the state of New Mexico, from PSCOC, uh, meeting that have more projects, um, than you have finances to pay for. Um, and so there's a process that PSCOC has for achieving a funding waiver. Um, I, I understand you, uh, have been down this road before, so I'm not gonna go into detail on how that funding waiver works unless anyone has any questions. But, um, the, the big takeaway here is that we created two scenarios, one that requires a funding waiver, and PSFA also requested that we generate a second scenario, which you'll see here in a couple of slides, that does not require a funding waiver, but it does, um, it does require the district to stretch out their projects in order to pay for all of them. So we're gonna cover the funding waiver required scenario first here in scenario one. You'll notice that, um, on item one, we have rebuilding 10 schools. Eight out of, uh, those 10 are currently underway, or, um, Rocky View is the one that will not be, is, is being held off, not being rebuilt. But, um, the two that are not currently under systems awards are the last two listed there, which is Chi Dodge Elementary and Gallup Middle School. So those two are included as replacements, um, in the first scenario. Also in number two, you'll see demolition rebuild DTE Academy. Um, that's currently in a, uh, planning and programming stage. Number three is completing systems-based grants at eight schools. So majority of these are roofing. Um, some of these are already, um, well underway or even towards the end of, and so we only included the remaining funds, uh, required for some of these, um, finishing touches on some of the systems grants that are still, uh, in process. But we have eight schools there. Um, for teacher housing, uh, four different sites there, Rico Street, Row, uh, Crown Point, and David's Seat for new teacher housing. Number five is completing McKinley Academy at UNM, and then number six is completing priority repairs, which is deferred maintenance, things like, um, roofing and flooring and paint and ceiling tiles and lighting, all the things that, um, are deferred maintenance go into number six. So if we look at the next slide, we'll see, um, a lot of information here. Uh, this, essentially, this slide breaks down each one of those projects into its own row, and we have project values, meaning how much is it gonna cost to all of these things? And then what would be the district's, uh, required for funding? So, uh, at the bottom, you'll see a couple of red arrows, and to boil this down for the board, um, the total project value for scenario one is just over 740 million. And the far-right-hand side shows after all of the state matches, um, assuming the, some of these projects are already awarded, some of these projects would need to be applied for through the state. Assuming all of that works through, then there would be $172 million requirement from the district to fund the $740 million in projects. Now, um, you'll notice that, under that right arrow, it says current, this is current cost, this is not escalated. Um, we do try to make that a point to, point that out because, as I'm sure you're very aware, the last couple of years, cost of construction has just skyrocketed. Um, so five years ago, it would've been hard to predict in 2019 what was about to happen in 2020 and 2021. Um, some of these projects, we were estimating $350 a square foot for a new school, and now they're coming in over 900. So just extremely, uh, different than what we were, we, different discussion than what we would've had five years ago. Uh, but the point is, this does include a waiver requirement, um, and you can remember that there's $92 million available, um, in the five-year plan for finances and $172 million required if it was all executed today. So, um, of course, this is not achievable in five years with the $92 million, and thus, um, a funding waiver would be applied from the state where the state would make up the difference, uh, which is roughly $80 million. Okay, um, of course, uh, that is on a 40,000-foot view. Every project would need to be addressed individually, um, in scenario one with PSCOC. Next slide? All right, here's scenario two, and again, this was, um, the state, uh, PSFA asked, uh, asked us to generate a plan that was achievable with the finances that the district had. And so you can see in the dark red that there, all of the projects in scenario one cannot be achievable in scenario two because there aren't enough funds to achieve all this. So, um, two takeaways here. One, one takeaway is, for scenario two, projects had to be cut, um, Chi Dodge, Gallup Middle School, for the rebuilds, um, the building-type repairs, um, at Crown Point Middle School, JFK Middle School, and Chief Manolito Middle School, and then also, um, priority three and four repairs had to get cut as well. Um, so generally, priority three and four repairs are things that are more associated with flooring, paint, ceiling tiles. Priority one and two repairs are more associated with roofing, HVAC, fire alarm systems, um, those kind of things. And so that's why you see three and fours were, were, um, cut out of the scope in scenario two in order to accomplish this. The other big takeaway, which you're gonna see in the next couple of slides, is that even with, um, reducing the scope of work in scenario two, there wasn't enough funding, um, to accomplish all of this work in five years. And it requires, um, more of a, we stretched it out to a 10-year plan, um, with multiple bonds to be able to accomplish the work that you, you have going on, and some of the work that, uh, would be added on from a deferred maintenance perspective. Next slide? All right, so this is the financials, um, by, by project, to understand where the total costs, uh, shake out. And so remember, it was just over 740 million, uh, in scenario one for project value, that's total project value. Uh, in scenario two, we're looking at, uh, just under 640 million. So, uh, $100 million less than, um, I guess for simple terms, $100 million less than construction in scenario two. Uh, and then on the far-right-hand side, you'll see the district funding required is still, uh, 149, almost 150 million, when that's not escalated. And so, um, that was the requirement for stretching this out over 10 years to determine, to develop a plan that's achievable financially without, um, going into a negative balance. So, uh, if we look at the next slide, uh, it's hard, it's probably hard to read on your screen, but the main takeaway here is that, um, you'll see up in the top, first row in the blue, the years, 2024, 25, 26, all the way up to 2034. So we developed, uh, a 10-year cash flow with the projects that are identified in scenario two, and escalated these costs by 3.5% per year, which is the, which is the average, uh, escalation rate for commercial construction, uh, over a 30-year period. So, you know, the last couple of years have been pretty, very different from the historical averages, but that's what we plugged, 3.5%. Um, and down at the bottom, we developed a spin-down plan based on when these projects would occur and how much money was left to spend on them, and then determined the bonds, the GO bonds required to accomplish this work without a funding waiver. And so you'll see three yellow cells are very small, very small there, but you see in 2025, there's a $17 million, uh, GO bond. That's the no-tax increase bond, 2025, and then two $25 million bonds, one in 2029, one in 2033, uh, in order to have a solvent plan. Um, and you'll notice in the bottom right corner, there's a red arrow pointing up. That's 2032, and the budget dips down to 287 grand, um, there. And so we really couldn't squeeze it any, uh, much tighter, uh, at least not without having round numbers in the bonds, uh, for the secondary bond in order to achieve this. Um, there, there are several assumptions built into this plan. Uh, again, no, no one really predicted COVID and what would happen to the cost of construction, and a 10-year time period is, is tough to, um, tough to forecast. But the point is, this is a plan, um, and it can be adjusted if scenario two is the route that needs to be taken. Um, it is achievable, but, um, you'll notice that, um, there, there are some assumptions in here. And so, uh, at the end of the day, this was the 10-year plan, and if we go to the next slide, you'll see how the projects would shake out, and you can see, um, this is the execution strategy. So, um, if you just follow the blue cells from top left to bottom right, that is, that is the construction. So you can't do, um, you know, $640 million worth of construction in 2025, or you won't have enough money to pay for it all. So in order to stretch out the, in order to have enough money to pay for the invoices, to stretch out the construction and what the industry would call the spin-down, uh, put a spin-down plan that happens over time, which is not only healthy for cash flow, but it's also healthy for contractor availability, architect and engineer availability, and then in-house project management, or third-party project management staff, just to oversee all of these, um, construction projects. So, um, these, that's how this was structured, and, um, this, uh, cumulative available funds at the very bottom is same, same, uh, information from the previously, previous slide. And I think you can go to the next slide. That covers scenario two, and, uh, we'll hand it back over.
President Mortensen, members of the board, superintendent, and members of the audience, what I'd like to say is that the reality is, is when the PSFA and Public School Capital Outlay Council was created in the early 2000s, the district was in a position where state matches might've helped us if those awards were timely, consistent, and we were able to replace schools as we needed to an, annually. Um, because buildings really only last 40 or 50 years if they're built well, and some of our buildings aren't, were not built well, um, when they were originally built, and they were not built to gut and, and just do a, a rehabilitation on them. They really need to be rebuilt in order to be functional for an extended period of time. Um, we are now 22 years after that initial, um, foray into this, and we're no longer at a match point. We're at a desperation point. Um, they are going to have to step up and give us waivers, um, because we are so far behind. Um, as was ruled in December of 2020, um, from Judge DePauli, the grant system that we have to go through is so arduous, complex, contrary, it takes us years to get anything done. I mean, Red Rock and Tohachi were allocated in 2018. We barely started earthwork moving in 2023 on Red Rock, and we barely started seeing earthwork move on Tohachi in 2024. We have 32 physical buildings, not including the stuff that they won't pay for, like any of our administration buildings, our maintenance buildings, um, other things that are needed. While PSFA forced us to do option two, I'm telling you right now, from the district standpoint, option one is the only option, and they have to get it together to get all of the paperwork done that they want us to do, we'll do it. Catherine, Catherine works day and night to get them anything that they need, but we get delay after delay after delay. There are no clear and consistent written processes for this. We are often told one thing, even in writing, and then we do it, and then they say, nope, sorry, you're supposed to do this other thing, so we're not gonna help you. It is so frustrating. So this process has been a little tense for us. Um, Capital A and E has tried to facilitate, like I said, they kind of have to do what the state requires of us in order for us to get this through the state, because if we don't have a, an approved FMP, then we can't even apply for any more money. So I, I encourage you to ask questions if you have them, um, but I'll be transparent. The, the state just cannot tell us anymore that they're not gonna give us waivers. We're not in that position anymore, and we're putting every penny we have that we can scrape together to these projects.
I, I just add that the state, uh, was a few years ago, they had a billion dollars for facilities that were in the bank, um, and now they have for facilities that were in the bank. And now they have one point six billion dollars that they have not spent. And so it's, it's a, it's a pretty sad state of affairs when they're not willing to help students, think about students. I think they're, either they think about themselves, or they're not willing to change the bureaucratic processes that they have created. And so it's unfortunate. Any questions from the board?
Board members, you got anything? Alright, I've got some questions. One of them you kind of answered was, one of the things I didn't see on here was, was some of the, I don't even know what else you'd call them, other than like ancillary facilities, they're like, you know, district facilities. You know, you talked about like, you know, central office, or the bus barn, or the maintenance areas, or warehouses. Another thing that I, that I was thinking of that kind of is used district wide, is Angelo DePaulo Stadium down there, that's kind of a district wide facility, but doesn't necessarily fall under Gallup Mid, or Mia Mura, or, you know, I'm not sure how that works. And so what, what do you do about those kinds of facilities?
President Mortensen, it is not currently part of our plan. We were able, we were very lucky to receive an appropriation from Senator George Munoz several years ago to refresh that facility, because it is used by multiple community members and the school district. It is not currently in a priority state versus the ones that we've presented in the plan, and some of that is the ranking that we have to do. But the state will not help us at all. That is a hundred percent outside of adequacy, that facility. The state will not help us provide any funding for that facility.
Okay. My other question here is, like, so this is, like, we're talking about like a five year plan, or like a ten year plan, and it kind of sounds like it's almost like paying for a project over five years, or over ten years. But, I mean, does that, that doesn't really account for, I mean, like, next year, these other facilities are going to be a year older, and a year in worse shape, and stuff like that. So, I mean, all we're talking about is like a static look at where we're at right now, and financing that over five or ten years. But this plan doesn't take into account, like, the continued degradation and depreciation of our other facilities. And so how exactly, how exactly do you, do we plan on paying for that stuff? You know, I mean, you know, Mia Mura, and schools that aren't on the, aren't on this list, you know, that aren't on this list, they're not getting in any better condition. They're not getting in better condition next year than they are this year.
President Mortensen, you are a hundred percent correct. And while we do revisit the five year facility master plan as significant events occur, we do have to sometimes make changes to assumptions. It is a static review. And, and the two that are taken off of scenario two, which is T Dodge and Gallup Mid, we just found out are eligible for replacement, and that list comes out every year. And so I suspect next year, more of our facilities that are in aging statuses. And, and that's why I say, in two thousand and two, yes, the match plus actually doing things timely may have put us on a track where we could stay within a cycle. Twenty-two years later, where we haven't made much progress, we're no longer there. The state has to step up.
It's, it's frustrating, because there's nothing, like, it's hard to account for, like you said, you know, work that was done, you know, terrible work in the first place, or maybe, you know, they were value engineered out of, you know, out of a project. You know, Gallup High School, I mean, they, they moved into that in ninety-eight. I remember within the last, I don't know, maybe ten years or so, maybe it's longer than that, ten or twelve years, they, they totally remodeled Gallup Middle School over there, and had that thing like way torn down and rebuilt and stuff like that. And I mean, it, it's just hard to believe that some of these facilities are already like up on the rankings when, I mean, they really are, you know, not that, not that old, you know, not that, not that old. How do we make sure that there isn't any value engineering? I know that, you know, that's the terminology that they use for just like cutting things out, you know, of the, of the plan. Like, how do we account for that, or, you know, for making sure that materials and equipment are used in these things that will, you know, that will last? I mean, I, you know, I have to talk to people in the community, and we're like, oh yeah, we're going to be rebuilding Gallup High, it's on our list, it's going to be, you know, whatever rebuilt, and then, you know, started within the next couple of years, is out for this or that. And people around the community are like, are you kidding me? Like, we just, like, literally, this is just not that old. Like, that's just not a very old facility.
President Mortensen, so addressing Gallup High School, I, I wasn't with the district at the time that school was built, but in partial defense of the district, nineteen seventy-four was the year that they took away the substantial funding that the district received in order to facilitate some of these projects. So it took them multiple decades to save up enough money to build that. And you're correct, they did value engineering the project. They didn't put in a sufficient foundation to the compaction and shifting of the soil. They didn't put a drainage plan in place, substantially eroded the exterior of the facility, as well as the sidewalks. And to answer your question, no, we no longer allow value engineering. As a matter of fact, if someone puts that, an architect puts that in one of their requests for proposals, that's a huge red flag. I'll be transparent, because we want to be sure that we're building facilities that are right sized, but are also built to last, that they have sufficient groundwork and foundation, that they're made out of materials that will, will stand the test of time. Lucky that we don't have the inclement weather incidents that other school districts do. But we have pretty significant weather shifts here. I mean, you, you can go seventy, eighty degrees from day to night, and that's tough on sidewalks, asphalt, all sorts of things. But all of that takes money. Building buildings correctly takes money. And so I, as I mentioned, you know, there is, for me, definitely for me, there is no other option. The state has to help us.
We, we as a district and as a board just have to, I mean, we just have to like put our foot down with this stuff. We, our students deserve it, the state has the money. You know, we're, we owe it to these kids. We, as a board, just cannot, just can't put up with this. I mean, we have to, you know, saying value engineering has to be like a punchable offense or something. I mean, it, this is a, this is a serious, you know, it's a serious thing, and we've got to make sure that this is done, done correctly. Board members, what other questions do you have? Where do we, where do you want to go from here? Go ahead, please.
President Mortensen, Secretary Schaaf, you do not have to, you can just motion to accept the facility master plan. But just know that through the board resolution, which hopefully will be approved, and that you will be hearing as well as the ongoing litigation related to the Zuni Capital Outlay case, option one is the only option I'm targeting.
Yeah, so the, the motion is to approve the facility master plan, and, and then, you know, something that we talk about, or, or whatever, I mean, the, you know, moving forward, we just, like, we, we buckle down and, and go to war and make this, you know, make this scenario one stuff happen with the, with the funding waivers and stuff. Like, we, we just have to, it has to get done. It has to get done. So with that, does everybody understand exactly what we're talking about? Okay, then I'll go ahead and hear a motion.
Okay. I'd motion to approve the district facility master plan.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Spinoli? Mr. Schaaf? Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Okay, next item here.
Mr. Mortensen, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for everyone for putting this together. And most, most of all, you know, I would like to thank Giovanna and her staff. You know, like you said, that you do watch out for things that, you know, any red flags. Thank you for that, and not just sitting back and letting things happen when they shouldn't be. Thank you so much for that.
And Ms. Chrysler, you're the, the only person I know of that looks like in two places at one time. That's how you get things done here. Great. Next item, six B. Mr. Hyatt, you have some information for us on this?
Mr. Mortensen, President Mortensen, members of the board, each year, we have this particular item on our agenda, and it's simply the, the approval for the designation of staff as signatories for contracts, as we have several of those that happen throughout the year. And so that's, again, just this process. Ms. Hanks, do you want to go into any more detail other than that you need to provide?
Who are we talking about, and is there limits to what they're able to sign for, or what, how's this work?
President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, this is limited capacity in two areas. One is contract designation, and that is for Superintendent myself and Ms. Chrysler. So we all have different authority in relation to contracts, so that can actually legally bind the district, and this includes things like purchase orders. Additionally, the second signatory is transacting financial transactions. So this is dealing with banks and dealing with other institutions as we issue checks, do open and close bank accounts. And that is limited to Superintendent myself and our new fiscal services director, J R Houston.
Okay. I want to make sure my son's name is not on here in regards to like parent notes and things like that. He is unauthorized to sign parent notes.
Only if you say so, sir.
Board me, board members, you have any questions, or do we want to vote on this? Okay, go ahead, in motion. Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Spinoli?
Priscilla?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf? Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Alright, next item is six C. This is a continuation of what we talked about last time with, with our brainstorming session for resolutions for legislative platform. We tabled this last time, if you remember. And so these are the things that, that, that the district staff here has kind of boiled down and, and codified for us to look at and to vote on.
President Mortensen, members of the board, exactly as you said, we went back under your direction to create resolutions based off of those, that brainstorming session. And Ms. Hanks did a great job of capturing the wants of the board inside of those resolutions. We reviewed them, we tweaked them a little, tiny bit, and then we're here to present them back to you to see which ones, or if you want to present all of them to the New Mexico School Board Association as resolutions for their legislative platform. So if you have any questions on any of those, we're willing to discuss.
Mr. Mortensen, just looking over all the, all the legislative platforms, you know, they're all really good, and I, I guess we go ahead and submit all of them.
What do we got here? Quick, quick run through. There's the one that we talked about for the funding for homeless students. If there's more detail that I'm missing too, Ms. Hanks, let me know. The next one is the align the funding formula methodologies with findings in the Ozzie Martinez litigation. Is there any other stuff into that? I know we talked a little bit about that, Ms. Hanks.
President Mortensen, this does align with what was asked during the meeting, and it also specifically speaks to areas that the district has requested that the state look at, which includes the at-risk funding formula, which has not been updated. They have increased the index, but they have not aligned it to the Ozzie Martinez findings, nor the state definition of at-risk students. They also have not addressed in a systemic fashion the funding of college and career readiness. And they also continue to fund Indian education through a below the line funding without a funding formula. And so the, all three of those, which the board has discussed often are specifically addressed, as well as an overall resolution to align to the findings in Ozzie Martinez.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, the next one here was the drug and safety related funding for public schools. This had to do more with tightening up the laws as it concerns like recreational marijuana and things like that we talked about.
And the packaging specifically.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, that's right, the packaging of it. The next one was the timely initial final and carryover awards, trying to make sure that their feet are held to the fire in terms of, of getting awards handed out and things like that, so they're not taking so dang long. Okay.
And President, a point that may be valuable to the board is that the state has a federal audit finding related to this, that federally, the, the U.S. Department of Education has issued a report as of March twenty twenty-four, find this in need of immediate action of remediation by the state.
Good. We can, yeah, we can hammer them on that.
And I just want to add that as we go into legislative session, as you talk to legislators, obviously, the LFC continues to talk about cash balances, and this is one of the contributors to those cash balances, is having to carry this liability in the district as far as funding, to cover these liabilities, often from late awards.
Well, that leads us to, I think the next one here is about this cash balance transparency. Can you jump us through that a little bit more? I think it's, it is related, I know that.
It is.
President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, this one goes into detail as to why districts carry cash balances. There has been legislative differences in relation to cash balance, what they call caps, since two thousand and three in the state of New Mexico. Those were finally removed in two thousand and eleven, and that was just after a recent crisis that the state had gone through a significant financial downturn. So there are many reasons that districts carry cash balances. But one of the things that they tend to leave out when they give those cash balance numbers is all the liabilities that are attached to the cash that is in the bank. And those can be outstanding purchase orders, like those attached to construction, liability for temporary cash transfer as we wait for repayment of loans. We also sometimes use our operational funds to start programs, because award letters are so late. If we wait until we get the award letter, we won't start that program until February or March, which will not help a student in this year's student that's sitting in the classroom now. So this one does go through a detail of what should be discussed in relationship to cash balance. And so we're asking for no cash caps, as well as be transparent about why districts have cash balances.
Right. Okay, okay. And then the last one here is, has to do with the ridiculous adequacy standards, and, and going back over revamping adequacy standards. Did I sum that up right? Ridiculous?
President Mortensen, yes, you did. And in this one, I have actually attached recent information that does state that, that has been presented, that they know that these are problems. PSFA presented to this, to the Public School Capital Outlay Oversight Task Force on May twentieth, twenty-four, that these are all problems that they actually recognize. And then also, the LFC recently heard from PSFA that yes, there is an excess of one point six billion dollars in the fund.
Perfect. This represents a ton of work by Ms. Hanks and her team, and we really appreciate your, your work in there. How many times did you have to write whereas?
Copy and paste is my friend.
There you go, there you go. Okay, board members, if there's no other questions, then let's go ahead and vote.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolutions for the New Mexico School Board Association legislative platforms.
Second by Mr. Schaaf. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Spinoli?
Ms. Spinoli?
No, dear. Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Ms. Spinoli might have been in a cell phone service.
This is approved.
That's for the legislative platform. As it turns out, we've got a little bit of juice, hopefully, with the New Mexico School Board Association. See if we can, you know, get this stuff in there and garner some more support from our, you know, our other, our other school boards around the state, and, and, you know, maybe we can affect some change. Man, I hope so. The last thing here is notice of sale of the two thousand and twenty-four general obligation bonds. Ms. Hanks?
President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, this is the last of the six million dollar sale that we had in two thousand and twenty-one that was approved by voters. And it will be targeted towards drainage, walkways, fire pumps, HVAC, intercoms, fire panels, roofs, and playgrounds. This will conclude the total six million dollars that we were able to do at our last bond sale. I do just want to remind the board that our assessed valuation as a county, which is what our bond cap relies on, continues to decline, and that's because of major assets coming off the tax rolls related to recent closures. We are hopeful that because we have been conservative, there was a pretty precipitous decline that happened, and so we were conservative with our last year. decline that happened, and so we were conservative with our last-year bond to hold the tax rate steady because we were already carrying a significant amount of debt, that we will be able to hold that same tax rate and get the $17 million that was mentioned on, or, or maybe a little bit more depending on a final assessed valuation. But I do want to issue a sign of caution, and this is something that we're often pushed back on as to why we don't take advantage of the HB 33 or other things that we could do for funding. The reality is, is that with the declining assessed valuation and the debt that we're already carrying, we are close to the constitutional mill levy rate that is allowed by the state of New Mexico. And if we see another precipitous decline, that could actually skyrocket tax rates. And that's not something that is fiscally sound to do. That's not what our bond visors advise us to do, and that's nothing I would ever recommend to the board. So if you ever hear somebody say, well, why don't you take out, you know, to the maximum, we have a declining assessed valuation, maximizing all of our capacity at this time to, to the very capacity would be fiscally irresponsible, in my opinion. We are bonded to practical capacity, which, again, stabilizes the tax rate and leaves us some room if we see more significant decline in assessed valuation, which unless somebody buys one of those plans, it's going to happen. Thank you.
All right, board members?
Motion to approve notice of sale for the 2024 general obligation bonds.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Ms. Benali? This is vote for the bond sale?
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is the executive session that we have here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mortensen, yes, I vote yes.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay.
Did you get that, Joe? Thank you. Okay. Next item is the executive session.
Motion to excuse to the executive session on limited personnel matters to review and conduct the evaluation of the superintendent and effect on contract pursuant to Section 10-15-1 H2 of the Open Meetings Act. No action will be taken and only the items listed herein will be discussed.
Thank you. Second down there?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali? Mr. Schaff? Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Priscilla, yes. 1225.
Okay, we're going to run to executive session. We'll be back in a couple of minutes.
Okay. Do you want that letter? I have the lead.